Meeting of the School Committee will come to order. Can I have roll call vote, please?
Mr. Abraze?
Yes.
Mr. Barrows?
Present.
Ms. Cardelo?
Present.
Mary Di Maria? Ms. Lambert?
Present.
Mr. La Monica?
Present.
Ms. Murray? Mr. Panerisi? Ms. Sarni? Ms. Dinah Lewis?
Present.
Mr. Parker?
Present. We have eight members present. We have a quorum. Ms. Lewis, the student rep is attending remotely and Ms. Cynthia Sani is running late, plans on attending, and the mayor had a previous commitment. So if we can all please rise and salute the flag.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Superintendent, would you like to read the next order of business, please?
Absolutely. So Roman numeral three is the reading of the records. We have several different records for this evening. The first, the meeting from June 7th, 2021. The second, the special meeting from May 25th, 2021. And then the third, we have put in an amendment for the meeting from May 17th, 2021, to change the language to reflect that the SOI for that evening was for the new school and not the roof.
I'll make a motion to waive the read of the records and place it on file.
A second.
Okay. I didn't attend a motion that we take these items one, two, and three collectively.
So moved.
A second.
All right. So thank you. So therefore, can I have a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Abraze?
Yes.
Mr. Barrows?
Yes.
Ms. Cardelo?
Yes.
Ms. Lambert?
Yes.
Mr. La Monica?
Yes.
Ms. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Panerisi?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes, in affirmative, you have accepted the records as presented. Madam Superintendent.
Thank you. Roman numeral four is public comment.
Second.
Yeah, motion made a second to open for public comment. Can I have roll call vote, please?
Mr. Abraze?
Yes.
Mr. Barrows?
Yes.
Ms. Cardelo?
Yes.
Ms. Lambert?
Yes.
Mr. La Monica?
Yes.
Ms. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Panerisi?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes, in affirmative, we are now opening for public comment. Do we have anyone in the line?
We do not.
Not. Pleasure of the body.
Make a motion to close public comment.
Second.
Okay, motion made a second to close public comment. Roll call vote.
Mr. Abraze?
Yes.
Mr. Barrows? Ms. Cardelo?
Yes.
Ms. Lambert?
Yes.
Mr. La Monica?
Yes.
Ms. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Panerisi?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes, in affirmative, you have closed public hearing. I'm sorry, public comment. Just as a side note, you know, new guidance came out, meetings, as a result of some of the restrictions being lifted on COVID. In the brief that I read that was supplied by Mr. Barrows, we can continue this format, format if I were to correctly till April of 2022 in this way. So therefore, because we're going to be doing these hybrid meetings, we still have to take a roll call vote for every vote. So no voice votes, no, no, no signs. We're supposed to take a voice vote. So it'll be a little bit cumbersome, but no, we're used to it. So thank you. Madam Superintendent, at number five.
Absolutely. So Roman numeral five is the superintendent's report, and we're going to start this evening as usual with the superintendent's update. And this will be our last one of this school year. So we thank everybody for joining us tonight for it. We actually have a number of updates and news to share, all varieties, as well as an update from our student representative, Dinah Lewis, who will be giving that towards the end of my update. And I think all of these updates that we are providing tonight serve as a reminder that we're returning to the kinds of activities, schedules, events, and happenings that we want for students and our district as we emerge from the from the pandemic. So we'll go ahead and get started with talking about registration. So as usual, our parent information center is located at the Kavarian School, and it is open. Our staff is available to enroll students even throughout the summer. The pick hours remain unchanged, and those are that we are open from 7:30 a.m. to 3:30 p.m. On Mondays, Tuesdays, and Thursdays, we are open from 7:30 a.m. to 5:30 p.m. on Wednesdays, and from 7:30 a.m. to 1:30 p.m. on Fridays. So parents and guardians, as usual, can book an appointment through the EPS website where they can review the details of the process and secure a time slot, or they can do so by calling 617-544-6955, and they'll be able to speak with someone in English, Spanish, Portuguese, or Haitian Creole. Our family liaisons have been working diligently at PIC to warmly welcome all of our EPS families with the information and resources that they need. And beginning this year, we are going to be giving every new student a children's book in his or her native language as a welcome gift from the Everett Public Schools. Upon enrollment, families are also going to be given a family liaison information card to connect them directly to someone who can answer their questions in their native language. I am also very excited to announce a new member of our Everett Public Schools team, Jeanette Velez, will be joining our team as our community engagement manager. Ms. Velez comes to us with 20 years of experience in early childhood education. Since 2013, Ms. Velez has served as the Chelsea Revere Family Network Coordinator for the Coordinated Family and Community Engagement Grant, which is a position funded by the Massachusetts Office of Early Education and Care. So her roles and responsibilities for the family network included working with families to access locally available and comprehensive services and supports on behalf of optimal child development and school readiness. So in addition, Jeanette is currently serving her fifth term on the Chelsea School Committee, for which she sure she served as chairperson in 2014 and from the years of 2016 through 2019. So both in her role as school committee chair and family network coordinator, Ms. Velez successfully convened multiple groups of stakeholders to work through issues and strategically planned supports for students and families. Over the years, she's also been a very active member of her community, community, serving on the boards of Chelsea Pop Warner, Chelsea Little League, Chelsea Youth Basketball, and the school councils at the Kelly Elementary and Clark Avenue Middle Schools. So the community engagement manager position is going to be an important one here in the Everett Public Schools because it's going to help us form lasting and meaningful relationships among students, parents, families, public agencies, community-based organizations, and we believe that Ms. Velez will be able to serve as a cultural broker who can connect the greater Everett community with projects, decisions, councils, and committees, even to ensure our opportunities are being leveraged by those who will benefit most. So we're really looking forward to having her join our team and to create a strong bridge between the voices of the community and the school district's many teachers, staff, and leaders. She will officially begin on July 6th. We are also happy to announce that we've been awarded a Competitive Gleam Grant by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. So this grant will be used to improve various aspects of our ELA programming from grade six through eight. Specifically, it is meant to help us modernize the ELA experience to reflect more the rich and diverse backgrounds of our students. It will also increase access to rigorous content for our middle schoolers. The Gleam Grant is a significant one, and it totals $535,336 over three years. Specifically, we are going to form a team that will vet and purchase curriculum and provide training to teachers and administrators. We will also be utilizing a literacy consultant to provide professional development and to ensure rigorous literacy instruction across all of our content areas. So this grant is going to be an important part of our overall literacy efforts moving forward. Our MCAS performance data shows that we do need to support our middle schoolers and better prepare them for high school. I also did hear from several teachers during my Listening and Learning Tour, which I mentioned at our last meeting, who definitely want to deepen the pool of resources we use to teach ELA and provide more meaningful and differentiated opportunities to our middle schoolers. So we hope that this will support in both of those efforts. So just as a reminder, we are offering a free summer academic program at the Parlin, Lafayette, Kavarian, and Whittier Schools. So the program is for students entering kindergarten through eighth grade and runs from July 6th through August 6th, from 8:00 a.m. to 12:30 p.m. and includes breakfast and lunch. So we encourage our families to take advantage of this opportunity to be, to have their students be with classmates and to work with our teachers. The program is featuring instruction in math, literacy, and science, but our overall objective is to just provide a fun and engaging experience to our students for the summer, one that we think is going to serve as a really nice springboard into 2021, 2022. So the timing of the program, we hope, is beneficial to students as they can enjoy a two-week break, including the July 4th weekend before starting the summer program on the 6th. There is no paperwork to fill out. All parents and guardians have to do is sign up via the EPS website and then accompany their student to the first day of the summer session to sign a consent form. So that is all that they need to do. As of this morning, more than 654 families have signed up for our summer academic program. So we do still have slots left, but they're definitely filling up fast. And so we encourage families who are interested to sign up. Not included in that number are the 240 students we have enrolled in the Special Education Department's Extended School Year Program. 216 students will attend that program in person, while 24 will be participating remotely. We currently have 11 students set to attend Everett High School for that program, 132 at the Lafayette and 87 at the Webster. We also have approximately 270 students with extended year services in their IEPs, and of the 30 or so who have not yet signed up, some will be in the coming days, and others will have actually indicated to us that they would like to take a break over the summer. So we're making sure to contact everyone so that they can let us know what is going to be their ideal or preferred model for the summer. As a new and expanded part of the district summer program, our dedicated and talented staff have also stepped up in a major way and are offering a variety of enrichment programs at many locations within EPS and around the city. So these include offerings, music and art offerings, fitness and sports programs, as well as other clubs and activities. So the dates and times of these programs are such that they do not conflict with the academic portion of our schedule. But slots are definitely more limited in our enrichment camps. So in fact, six sessions have already reached their capacity, and two others are very close to the limit. So again, we're encouraging families to visit our website, review the varied offerings, and sign up as soon as possible. And as of this morning, we have 356 students enrolled in our enrichment offerings. So to revisit, hopefully for the last time, our two key metrics, which are the daily incidence rate and percent positivity. Everett remains in the green, which is the low-risk category, and this is according to both the state ratings and the CDC ratings. The continued decline in both trends are very encouraging to everyone in the community. We also wanted to remind you that we have a Pfizer mobile vaccine clinic that is scheduled for this Thursday, June 24th, from 4:00 to 7:00 p.m. at Meadows Park. No appointment is needed, and organizers will book second appointments for everyone who does participate. And this is a mobile clinic that is being run by the city in partnership with Curative. So throughout the school year, we have remained focused on the number of confirmed cases for school-aged children, and here we see the month-by-month totals. The drop in May was definitely encouraging, and the June total through today is wonderful. So with just three school-aged children having confirmed cases in our community, each school should feel very proud of their efforts to safeguard against transmission. And to share the updated attendance figures, as of the last day of school, which was last Friday, those with perfect attendance or attendance rates greater than 90% continued to top more than 5,400 students. And as I mentioned at our last meeting, the trend line for the daily absences definitely spiked at the beginning of in-person learning for all different grade levels, but improved once students settled into the newer routines. So the average daily attendance rate of about 93% that we maintain this year is consistent with the historical data we have seen for the Everett Public Schools. This slide highlights some important resources that we wanted to share with our families. First, PEBT, which is the COVID-19 Food Assistance Program. It has been extended through August 21st. So in Massachusetts, all students who have received PEBT cards will obtain a total of $375 in PEBT benefits in two equal payments of $187.50 this summer. The first payment will be issued on July 1st, and the second payment will be issued on August 1st. Students who graduated in 2020 or have moved out of Massachusetts will not receive the PEBT benefits in the summer. Families who receive SNAP are eligible to receive PEBT for their children under the age of six. So these families will receive two summer PEBT payments of $187.50 totaling 375 for the summer. Payments for these children will be made on July 25th and August 25th. So looking past August, eligible families are encouraged to apply for SNAP benefits. An application can be submitted in 20 minutes or less by visiting the website listed on the slide or via the Department of Transition Assistance. PEBT will end with the passing of COVID, but we know that our food insecurity will not. As such, the state organization and public service leaders really are trying to stress longer-term solutions that SNAP may provide. Another service that we have been asked to share with our families is the website called FindYourFunds.org. So the name is pretty straightforward. It is intended to direct people to the federal tax credits and stimulus or economic impact payments that they actually may be entitled to. So the effort specifically aims to reach people who did not receive stimulus payments for themselves and/or their dependents, have no or low income, have never applied for taxes or haven't in recent years, or have a child who is not on the IRS records. So of the funds that our families might be available for is the child tax credit. People who apply now can receive $250 to $300 per child starting July 15th. Even those who don't usually file taxes because of their income are encouraged to apply. In addition to all of the necessary information, the Find Your Funds website can connect users to an easy online application process and free tax assistance. So last Wednesday was a special day in EPS. 22 of our parents received a certificate of completion and a Chromebook for completing a technology class from the organization Tech Goes Home, or TGH, who we partnered with this past year. So this year, we offered three classes, one in English, Spanish, and Portuguese. In the future, we will add a Haitian Creole courses as well as more classes across the board as all of our family liaisons will eventually receive the training needed to become certified TGH instructors. Participants learned several essential basics, things that are designed to sort of help build confidence in using technology in the most fundamental ways. So topics included internet basics, email management, intro to Google Suite, navigating Google Classroom, and saving attached documents in PDFs. So these skills are definitely helpful in a number of ways, from pursuing employment to connecting with students' educations. So this marks just the beginning of our partnership with Technology Go Home, Technology Goes Home. And this is a program that is meant to address the digital inequities that pose a significant barrier to opportunity and success for thousands of students and families. So we are hoping that this will break down those barriers. And I do just want to thank everybody who made this graduation ceremony such a huge success, including our maintenance department, who created the fantastic outdoor setting at EHS, and our family liaisons, who led our first graduating class, and also our school administrators, of course, for supporting these classes and their families in this effort. Last Thursday saw our eighth graders and their families enjoy moving on ceremonies at the English, Parlin, Kavarian, Lafayette, and Whittier Schools. So like their high school counterparts, our eighth graders reached this milestone under difficult circumstances. So we are very thrilled to have held these events in person and to poised them to begin their high school with careers without delay or restrictions. So our building leaders really were very smart, creative, and using their available outdoor space. And everyone was rewarded with really ideal weather this school year. So it was fantastic to see many families at these ceremonies cheering on students as they concluded middle schools. Middle school afterwards, everyone gathered for photos and the chance to be together as classmates and school communities. So it was a great day for the EPS, and I want to thank all of the dozens of administrators, teachers, and staff that enabled our eighth grader families to end the year in such a traditional fashion. I also just wanted to give a quick overview of the ongoing capital projects at Everett High, the Lafayette, Kavarian, and Madeline English Schools. So these projects, which we have discussed and which you have all approved in the recent weeks, are underway and on schedule to be completed by the time we do return to school in September. So we are awaiting parts in several instances, but all preliminary engineering and prep work has been completed. So this includes the installation of new valves for the extensive boiler work we're doing. At Everett High, we are due to receive the parts to repair two cooling towers over the week of July 26th. And when we do, it will take two weeks to finish that job. At the Lafayette, the demolition of two old boilers begins this week and is slated to wrap up on July 2nd. The new boilers are scheduled to arrive on July 12th and will be installed in the boiler room on July 14th. We are installing a chiller and boilers at the Kavarian, so the chiller and related equipment will arrive by August 29th, and the installation and startup process will be completed between August 30th and September 2nd. The current chiller will be able to be used throughout the summer. And the boilers have been ordered, and the system will be drained in late July, followed by demolition and installation. We will provide a more detailed schedule when we receive a delivery update for those. And the same scenario and schedule applies to the installation of the new boilers at the English School. So again, we'll provide a more complete timeline as soon as that is available. Now that sort of brings me to my conclusion, and so I wanted to take this opportunity to hand the presentation over, the update over, to Dinah Lewis, who was our school committee student representative, who will be providing us with an update on the work that she and her peers have been doing around multi-ethnic and multiracial diversity.
Thank you so much. And now we represent multi-ethnic and multiracial diversity. So for our Student Advisory Council update, the Student Advisory Council has recently made a survey on cultural awareness and diversity in an effort to improve cultural response, responsive practices at Everett High School. The first step was to collect data from the students to measure the diversity within our school community. Over 200 Everett High School students completed the survey. We are excited to begin the real work in response to student feedback. So now we will have some following goals. Things that we want students to accomplish or get out of this program is relationship building and repair, identifying a collection of activities, groups, spaces for students and educators to build and repair relationships within the school community. And then we will have community outreach, which is where students will work with local community centers, charitable organizations around Everett to better support the diverse cultures within the city. Our plan is to make these voluntary, serving the community as well as provide citizen internships. Then we will have leadership and advocacy. Student voice will be amplified through programs, clubs, social justice meetings, and advocate for economic support, equity, and inclusion. And finally, we will have some action steps from here. In the summer, we will be analyzing the data that we received from the survey. And in the fall, we will present the data to the school community. And in the winter, we will attempt to gather and gain understanding of how many students are interested in this organization. And then in the spring, we will develop a comprehensive plan to improve student advocacy as well as improving the cultural awareness at Everett High School. Thank you.
So thank you so much, Ms. Lewis. So that is just an update of what our Student Advisory Council has been doing for this year and preparing into next year. And I just want to say that it's been an absolute pleasure to meet with them and to look at the work that they've been doing. I'm really excited for next school year. And in that same vein, you know, we've been sort of closing out and reflecting upon this year, which it's difficult to sort of encapsulate what has been such an unforgettable experience. You know, one that has been scary and frustrating, yet I think in the entire way has been very inspiring because, you know, the worst doesn't, in fact, bring out the best in people, and the Everett Public Schools has proven no different. So to all of our staff, I just want to extend my deepest thanks on behalf of the district. As I said in a letter to all of the staff this past week, I just, I know that what they pulled off this past year was so much harder and more emotionally draining than they made it look. And I just wanted to thank them. I also, every member of the EPS community, along with our school committee members, I just wish you nothing but the most enjoyable of summers. As the slide indicates, we all have some much-needed time to relax, reboot, recharge, and reconnect, which is going to be sort of our theme for next year. So whatever it is that allows you to do those things is what I wish for you and for all of our families and our students. I hope that everybody gets to be reunited with their family and friends, those that they haven't gotten to see during the pandemic. And I hope that the coming weeks are restful, peaceful, safe, fun, and energizing. When we do reconvene in September, we will do so in our entirety, which I'm very excited about. And then we can begin to move ahead uninterrupted onto all of the great things and critical objectives that await us here in the Everett Public Schools. So at this time, I will take any questions.
Mrs. Murray?
Thank you. I have two questions. The first is about summer programming. If residents of the city of Everett with school-aged children who go to private schools or charter schools want to take advantage of the enrichment portion of the academics, of the summer school program, are they able to do that, or is it only for registered Everett Public School students?
So actually, all of our programs are available to Everett students, any student.
So any resident of Everett can apply?
That's correct. And that's for academia.
Okay. And then the second question I had is, is there information anywhere on our website in case families have lost their PEBT cards about how to get new ones, or do we know that?
So generally, you call the phone number because it does go through the Department of Transitional Assistance, and that information is on our website. Of course, we've also been supporting families and doing that as well. So they could certainly call us or any of the family liaisons, and we can support them in getting into contact with them.
Okay, thank you.
And Mr. Barrows?
Thank you, Mr. Drummond. Superintendent, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Superintendent, thank you for the presentation. Regarding summer programs, you mentioned that those who would like to sign up, they can do so through our website. Is there any other way that families can sign up without going through our website? As you know, we still have families who have difficulties with internet access and not going to our website and signing up. Is there any phone number or family liaisons that they can contact so they can sign up without going through our website?
Absolutely. So they can call their school leaders or family liaisons who would be able to support them. Again, the registration process is really minimal. So all they would need to do is speak with somebody who will be able to support them in filling out the forms and then come on the first day to sign the consent form. So absolutely.
Got it. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions that this superintendent update? I'm seeing none. Thank you.
Thank you so much. So under Roman numeral five, item number two is a presentation by our Everett Police Department Liaison. So as you may recall, we presented this exciting pilot internship opportunity back in February. The ultimate goal of the internship is for students to work directly with the EPD to generate new initiatives that can foster the growing relationship between our EPD and youth in Everett. So our students who are here with us today will report on what they have accomplished, including any lessons learned and recommendations for next steps for this pilot internship. So today with us today, we have our student representatives as well as Officer Ramuno and Officer Williamson.
Thank you very much, Priya. And on behalf of the COP Talk interns, thank you guys for having us this afternoon. For those of you that don't know me, I am Officer Ramuno. I'm one of the school resource officers in the district. And myself and Officer Williamson, along with Officer Donnelly, supervised by Sergeant O'Donnell and Lieutenant Rosa, had the privilege over the past three or so months to supervise our cohort of interns that you see before you. So the COP Talk internship came to us as an initiative with the hopes of bridging the gaps between the youth and the community and the police department. We don't need to get too much into it, but over the past year, it's been tumultuous across the country and not so much here in the city. But we took that opportunity as a way to see what we could do better and how the youth could better serve us. So without further ado, I'm going to turn it over to my interns. They're going to introduce themselves and then we're going to give them some prompts and they will provide feedback. Nick.
Hi, my name is Nick. I'm a junior at Everett High School. And I joined this internship because I really was interested in seeing how exactly the EPD and the community were planning to build those connections so we can be a better and stronger community.
Hi, my name is Jaslyn. I'm a junior. And my reason for joining the internship was to get to know the officers on a personal level and get to see what they do for the community and how they'll better support the youth and the families here.
Hi, my name is Kayla. I'm a sophomore. And the reason why I joined this internship is because I felt that it was important for my community to be heard. And I wanted to make changes in our local community.
Hi, my name is Sam. I'm a sophomore. And I joined this internship because I wanted to draw my own conclusions on my views on policing and not have to depend on social media to do that.
Officer Williamson, would you like to introduce yourself?
Hello, my name is Officer Williamson. One of the school resource officers, like Officer Ramuno said, and this internship meant a lot to me as an officer and as a person, to be able to connect with the youth in the community. So their voices could be heard through a lot of the events. Their age group doesn't always have a platform, doesn't always have a way to connect and get the opposing positions perspective. So it was nice to be able to sit down and have one-on-one conversations. So each of us could be heard to be able to connect with each other.
Thank you all. So before we get into the meat and potatoes of our internship, I'm just going to ask anyone who is viewing this to hold your questions till the end. So our first prop is going to be directed towards Nick. Nick, can you give us a brief description of your overall feelings in regards to policing at the start of the internship versus now?
There you go. So when I first joined this internship, or before I joined it actually, I was very skeptical due to everything on social media. You see such a negative outlook on policing due to it. And you know, going to this internship, I was very nervous and scared. But as we went on, I really got to see another perspective and truly come up with my conclusions based on these things instead of just kind of following the trail that we see on social media and really just develop a level of respect for them.
So same with Nick, I kind of felt like police officers had this personality that was always authoritative and cold-hearted. And again, this always had to do with social media. And again, you know, as time went on, I became more comfortable with them. And I started to respect them for what they do and I started, you know, get to see their more enjoyable personalities.
For me, before policing, I had had bad experience with the police. So that kind of shaped my view on them as uncaring for the adolescent and not really listening to our points. But now I feel as if they care about us. And even though they might not be all good people, but they try their best and yeah.
Definitely then, as we all can agree, social media played a big role in influencing how we viewed the police. And most of it was negative. So I think this internship was an important step to, you know, change our mindsets a bit and get to know them on a personal level. And I can say that I got to know them and I know that they're not all the same. They're not all bad people, you know, we're looking at our communities locally. Locally so far, me personally, I think Everett's starting to do a good job of making sure their community is intact, especially the police force, and we just could continue to go.
Thank you all. Our next prompt is going to be directed to Sam. Sam, can you give us a little bit on the local perspective on policing?
So I think that the EPD is doing a great job being involved with the community. I haven't heard any negative instances of them being involved in police brutality. And so I think that, you know, they're doing a great job, you know, making sure that the public is doing okay and interacting with the public. I think as, you know, civilians, it's good for us to see that, you know, they're being involved and they're showing support for, you know, events that happened at the Elliott FRC. And, you know, going to the events like the AAPI Memorial. So I think, you know, that gives us as regular civilians, a good outlook and a good portraying on police.
For me, and I know this is common for a lot of people of color in this city, we were kind of taught to not trust the police because at the end of the day, we can only survive by ourselves and by our own doing. And that has obviously changed with this internship.
My perception definitely changed as a result. I was able to connect with the officers and like the others said, I got to know that they were more involved in our community. For example, I know that the officers helped the director of the Family Resource Center, Liliana. They help with like food pantries and making sure families get the resources they need. And I think that's very important.
So this kind of ties in with then versus now. But this is more to focus on my perspective as a Brazilian, Latino boy. And this is in the society, you know. As a kid, I was very scared and fearful of the police because I always thought and I've always heard from, especially at home, like they were going to take us away and send us back to wherever we came from or whatever. And, you know, as I came here, there was definitely a level of respect earned because you learn that, you know, you shouldn't be completely fearful, you know. And yeah, you just get a new outlook on it that you don't usually get at home.
Thank you all again. So over the course of this internship, our interns had the opportunity of meeting upwards of 20 to 25 community partners, specialty units within the department and other professionals. With that being said, I'm going to send this next prompt to Jaslyn. Can you give us a rundown of some of the guests that you thought were most influential and why?
So in general, we've got the union president, our superintendent, our deputy superintendent, detectives, sergeants and the union president. And I think the most influential, or at least my favorites, were the union president. He was very interactive and helpful. He came in when we were learning about the use of the force and he ran us through some scenarios and how to handle certain situations and how to, how to just be able to, yeah, handle situations. And my other favorite, of course, would have to be Sergeant Gaff. He's very outgoing and he's in charge of the traffic unit. Yeah.
We also met people like the defensive tactics instructor, Officer Flores and Mary, the dog from the K-9 unit. But my favorite was Liliana from the FRC because she's such a big help to the community. And I've also had some past relations with her as well. So I know her very well and I'm very comfortable with her.
We got the opportunity to have a Q and A with the superintendent, the chief of police and the mayor. And that was a good opportunity for us to see what they do and any insights they have. And to basically hear our opinions and suggestions on what they should do, especially for the youth. And we also talked about mental health and other things like that. And I would say the most, my favorite person that we met was Carlos Fonizario, who was a youth worker from Roca. And I liked him because he himself was part of a gang. And I like how he is helping individuals, youth that are going through the same situation, who went through the same situation as him. And now he's educating the youth so that they don't make the same mistakes that he did.
We also met Officer Gustavo from the Criminal Investigations Unit and Lieutenant Rosa. And I would have to say that my favorite officer I've met so far is Lieutenant Journey because of how honest he was with us when he was talking about his personal experience dealing with one traumatic police event that he went through. And it helped me see that police officers are really just like us, but with a uniform on.
Thank you, interns. So as most of you can see, I don't have to say too much to show you how much this internship has influenced our youth, our teenage youth in the community. But with that, there's of course going to be suggestions and critiques moving forward. So Kayla, could you start us off in that conversation?
My biggest critique I would have to say is that we didn't get to have more people with us because if one of us is missing from one of our meetings, it felt like we were missing a part of us. And I would say that this is just a critique on the, on Everett Police Department, but I would say working on mental health of adolescents because I feel like we all have different definitions of respect and that comes across differently through all age groups. And I would like to see a mental health workshop because I believe that mental health is the biggest concern to have when dealing with the youth.
Just to tie in, I agree with Kayla, mental health is a big aspect in our community. And to add on to that, I think our officers should be trained as well on it. And our, like Kayla said, she wanted a workshop. So if our officers and the interns that come in could be trained on it, it would both benefit them. And of course, officers as well, because you'll get to also new things that weren't heard of before. And they could walk away with new information. Another suggestions I have is that I feel that we should have more options as to location wise, like not only meeting in the Crimson Cafe, but maybe going to the Police Academy and seeing how the training is done. And just more units around the community that the officers work with.
For me, I went to a AAPI vigil early in the program. And I would really appreciate if we could do more things like that, just to show that we are actually trying to get that community outreach going. Also, we did scenarios throughout our program. And a lot of us liked it a lot and it gave us a different perspective. So if you could do more of those in maybe different settings, that'd be great. And lastly, we had a Q and A session with a few influential people, some very big powerhouses from the city. And it could have gone better. So based on that, I would want everyone who is coming in to be informed that they're going to be talking about some very big and tough topics and to be prepared for that. Because so things that can trigger people aren't said and everything just goes a lot more smoothly and better for everyone.
This ties into Nick's point, but another suggestion that I have is to be in different settings. Most of the time during this internship, we had to scurry. We weren't banned. But we really liked going out more and going to the FRC, going to the AAPI event. And we would appreciate adding more of a community outreach aspect for next wave of interns. And that's it.
Thank you, interns. And we appreciate your three months of cooperation and will to grow together. Without further ado, I'm going to turn it over to the school committee for questions and then I'll follow up with one final question.
Okay, Ms. Lambert.
Thank you.
Just for the record that Ms. Sunny is present. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you to our guests. And thank you to the interns. I really appreciate your candid feedback. But I'd like to direct my question to Officer Ramuno and Officer Williamson. What was some of the feedback from, you know, or what were some of the lessons learned by you or from those that were able to meet interns in how they view youth in our city? You know, did you get any feedback from those other department heads or?
Sure, I can answer that. One of the biggest things I learned from this internship is during one of the sessions, we had the interns do a presentation for us. And they chose to do the presentation on the Black Lives Matter movement. So I have my own perspective and my own views on how I see that movement. But it was great to see, to see it from their perspective, to hear them talk about it, to hear what was important and what it meant for them. So it was, it was great to be able to have that conversation.
To add to that, I think we got a lot in regards to some symbolism that stems around the police culture. Some of those were the blue lives, or excuse me, the blue line. Some of those were the blue lives, or excuse me, the blue line. That was viewed as offensive. Um, and it's just, it's interesting because at the end of the day, I think our youth and our community in general just wants allyship and rather than resistance. And I think hearing it from there mult directly, that there's, that doesn't need to be a fight, it doesn't need to be an argument. It just needs to be a mutual understanding, allows us all to move forward.
Thank you very much.
Okay, uh, Ms. Sani.
Thank you. Um, actually, how many students did you have in this program?
So we have four, the four that sit before you are the four interns that we've had throughout.
Okay, was um, did we have a lot of other students that wanted to um apply? Or did they um just didn't have enough time to outreach to more students to get them involved?
So our initial application process had a response of about forty students. Of those forty students, we narrowed it down and then did a verbal interview. Of the forty we initially got to, we chose, I believe, ten, and these four were the ones that made that final cut. Some of the initial interns that were chosen weren't able to make it all the way due to jobs or other life responsibilities.
So my next question is, um, was it during the day, during class, or in the evening, or after school? When was this taking place?
We did the, go ahead. We did it in the evening, so they took place twice a week on uh Monday and Thursday. And we also gave them like research projects um or uh things to look up to to be able to bring back to the table to to have discussions on throughout the week. Um, so we met with them from three thirty to about some days. Sometimes we'd stay there, talking to them upwards to about seven o'clock, depending on what the discussions were about and what was taking place.
Thank you. And um, to through um the chair to the superintendent, um, did the students get credit for this um intern program for?
It was actually a paid internship.
Oh, it is a paid, okay. And my other question to the through you, the superintendent, um, is this something we can offer something um throughout the school year um to other students? So this way maybe get them more involved in in a part of the curriculum?
Absolutely. So this was just a pilot uh this year to see uh what to gauge what the entrance would be and uh the success of the program. Um, and we definitely value in the forward and.
Thank you. I I do believe this is a good program to um, you know, follow through and um, you know, bring to the older kids. Because I know they do have a police academy for the younger kids. Do they still have that going on in the city?
Yes, we do. So that's the Junior Police Academy, and this year it's gonna be held the week of July twelfth. And it runs for the week, and it's the fifth grade to the eighth grade students, and they get to spend a week with us. I think the benefit of a program like this is is we get a little bit of an older audience, we're able to talk about some of those tough topics. Um, and we could, I'm sure these interns can continue to talk about it because we we did a ton and we just don't have enough time to obviously cover all that. We wish we could do it with the entire community, but we broke down some of those hot topic videos that I'm sure all of you guys have seen on the news. And we talk about use of force and anything that really involves policing. And of course, it it truly takes a village to police, especially now in twenty twenty-one, which is why we brought in so many other professionals to show them who and how we work with those agencies.
Thank you, I do appreciate that. Thank you.
Mr. Barrows.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you both, uh, Officer Ramuno and um Officer Williamson. Um, my question actually uh for the students, uh, how, first of all, congratulations. Great that you know you were able to do this. Um, moving forward, how are you planning to meet all all those things that you've learned? Uh, how are you planning to bring those to, you know, to your communities? Like, you know, sorry to point out my fellow Brazilian, but the word of mouth in the Brazilian community is like huge, right? You want to say it to the other one, then that gets everywhere. Uh, but not only limited to the Brazilian community, but to many other communities. So those lessons that you learned, you know, things that you you taught that were, you know, one way, but it's it's a different way. Uh, so how are you planning to bring those messages to to your communities? No, not only to your peers, but uh to your families and then to everyone that you know uh in Everett.
Um, so being the youth, um, we do social media, and that is one way where we can spread a lot of information. Um, some of us have a large enough, a large platform where we can reach a lot of people. And um, use that to, you know, spread all of our messages that we want to. So um, all the things that we learned, um, we could use that to like, you know, influence people and to tell people what we learned and stuff like that.
Not only that, but just just conversation in general. You know, a lot of us, every now and then, these these topics pop up into conversation. And we always have that knowledge in the back of our mind, so we can always bring it up in a conversation, educate however many people are there, whether it be family, friends, or whatever, and truly get the message out. So there's not, I think, um, not as much misinformation, miscommunication.
Um, for me, um, I have a lot of friends and family. So when I started this internship, like I initially started telling them some things I learned. I think that's a good way um for information to travel and for um minds to change. Um, just like getting the word out there to your friends and family and letting them know the scenarios we were taught or um videos we watched, and just breaking it down for them is a good way for them to, you know, to kind of change their perspective or like um decide on their own what to believe and what not to believe and how to um view certain situations.
Got it.
I mean, honestly, some people are just not gonna listen. Some people are just gonna think that the police officers are horrible people. And those people, we can't really help because at the end of the day, we all here, we are willing to listen, we're willing to learn, and we're willing to help the community. So I will talk and I will advocate for the police officers to people that want to listen. And I will continue to keep an open mind because if I was driven to my ways, I wouldn't be sitting here today.
Thank you, guys. Really, really, really appreciate it, and thank you for uh finishing up this this program. Uh, and thank you P D uh as well. Thanks, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, uh, Ms. Cadello.
Thank you. My questions were mostly answered from um School Committee Woman Sani and um School Committee Man Marconi. But I do want to commend these four students. I'm so impressed. I'm so impressed with how you're sitting here tonight and how open you are about where your mind was and where your mind is, that you may have gone in with what you may have thought was a closed mind and already everything was preset. But you were willing to listen. And I I can't even tell you, you used your own time. You took two nights a week over a three-month period, which I'm sure you could have been hanging out, playing video games, doing whatever. But you did this. That speaks volumes, volumes. I'm so proud. I I really am. I'm I'm like, I have goosebumps listening to you tonight. It's all so impressive. It was a great learning experience for me, and I thank you for that. I commend you over and over again. Be proud of yourselves, and I thank the police for doing what they did and also the other community members who were involved. And for you to take your own time, to take the initiative, to invest into learning more, looking at a different perspective, getting involved in order to get a clear understanding of how not only does the police department work, but it sounds like you got to know about how the city is run and how the collaboration of many, many people, many institutes, not just the mayor and the superintendent, but all of us working together, make it work for all. And that's what's important. We're here to make it work for all people. So thank you, I salute you all, and I thank our police officers for doing this too. Thank you so much. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Henneresi, I'm sorry, do you want to? Nick, did you want to uh make a comment?
Yeah, thank you. Um, once again, I want to thank um Officer Ramuno and Williamson for what they do and taking the time to reach out to the kids. And once again, like Ms. Cadello said, um, you kids are like the pioneers. I mean, you went ahead, and I always said, if you if you want to know the truth, go to the source, and you guys did. Because that's the only way you're gonna find out the truth. There's a lot of gossip, and if you, like I said, if you want to go, if you want the truth, go to the source. And I was just wondering with um Officer Ramuno and Williamson and maybe the superintendent, if maybe during the year this was such a, you know, a big success to reach more kids, maybe you could pick a school at a month and just, you know, have an assembly and have an answer question period like like you kids did with them personally. But just to reach out more kids, to show them and answer the questions that they may have to ask. But I think it was a great program. I commend all of you, it was a great partnership, and um, good luck.
All right, Nick, um, would you like to comment? Okay.
Um, responding to the comments I was said, um, well, thank you for the comments first off and the compliments. But something that was often said by Officer Ramuno throughout our um time together was that they can only come so far, and we have to meet them at some point, you know. So I feel like um they did a really good job at doing their best to meet us. It wasn't, there wasn't so much argument, it was more conversation and understanding. And we we generally did try to hear them out and stuff like that. And I feel like that's what helped us the most here.
Thank you. Um, seeing other questions or comments, if I can have one from the chair, um, if if one of the officers um was, this was funded through a grant, correct? I would love to answer that for you. So I believe the initial proposal was supposed to be grant funded, and then our lovely school committee and school department actually ended up funding this, which is why we sit before you to speak of these successes, critiques, and suggestions moving forward. Okay, thank you. Um, I don't see. What's that, Jose?
Thank you, I was soon to forget. Um, I want to commend everyone uh because uh and uh the officers too because I think what's necessary is dialogue. And sometimes uh I happen to be in a profession that uh I think has been uh ripped apart for uh, you know, everybody knows lawyer jokes. And uh I think for a long time, we've had certain professions that it's sort of been taboo to speak against. But uh, the fact is, uh, there are sometimes people in positions that shouldn't be in positions. Uh, you know, in jobs, whether it's lawyers, police, firefighters, uh even teachers. Sometimes there are people that uh shouldn't be in those positions. And uh, it's important that we're able to talk about that, that uh when some of those people do things that uh, you know, hurt uh you know, the people in the profession, especially people like police officers that are in a public eye. It's important to talk about it. And uh, along those lines, I congratulate the officers because I'm I'm curious if this ever did get a little uncomfortable in terms of uh speaking with these kids. And the flip side to uh the students, I'm curious if there's been backlash for you in terms of, I know one of the young ladies mentioned some people already have their mind made up, you can't change them. I'm curious if there's a little pressure, as it appears that for the four of you, it was very part of an enlightening experience. But have your friends sort of look at you as sort of a solo or whatever because you seem to think that uh the police are okay now? I mean, uh, I don't know if I phrased this properly, but um.
Um, I would say that a lot of people have been jokes that, oh, you support B-Live Matter or, oh, you don't support B-Live anymore.
Can you repeat that? Because the feed was a little um backed up, but it's um it's up to date now. So can you repeat that, please?
Sorry.
Not your fault.
Um, I would say that a few of my friends have been like, oh, you support B-Live Matter, and you don't support B-Live anymore. And like, you've betrayed us as a black woman. And I don't take those comments to heart because I'd rather talk and act civilized than fight and rebel and cause more issues and more violence. And, you know, I always should have talked to my friends about this, even though they're very hesitant. And I have one friend that, well, for the life of her, would not listen to me. And that's that's her decision, that's her life. If you wanna live like that and stay stubborn in your own ways, to be quite honest, it's not my issue. And I'm happy I'm educated, I'm happy I'm here, because if I was like her, I wouldn't be here.
And if I can just add to that, you you also asked about whether or not there were some times where the conversations were uncomfortable. And uh, absolutely, absolutely. We, when you're having discussions about uh police brutality, racism, injustice, um, it does get uncomfortable. But we were all there with a growth mindset, and we were all there to work through the uncomfortness. We were all there to become better people. So and and that's what it takes to to move the needle forward.
To speak on that uncomfort piece, within the first two weeks, one of our interns looked at me directly in the face and said, I don't like you, I don't trust you because you are a white police officer. So to start the internship on that page and then move forward and to see the successes that we've had on both sides, I think is is absolutely remarkable. And it's truly the only way to move forward is to move together as a community. And I hope that our whole department can get behind this, I hope the whole community can get behind this. And moving forward, I hope all of you are willing to and jump in our sessions and maybe have some of these conversations yourself.
Um, also responding to the question, um, I I've gotten my fair, fair handful of backlash for being in this internship, you know, I I told my friends and now they make jokes, kind of like Kayla's situation. They're like, oh, you're a cop now, and they, you know, just stupid stuff. And like I said, I I don't take it to heart either, it's just, it is annoying, for sure. Very, very much so. But, yeah, um, it definitely isn't the best for me. And not uh to the other part of the question, we definitely did have some uncomfortable conversations, especially when it came to um the videos that we see online with police brutality and also um a few topics that we've had about that included politics in them. And also could, you know, a little uncomfortable as well. Oh, and our Q and A session as well, that was not fun, but yeah.
Ms. Mary?
Thank you. Um, first, I want to say that as always, I'm incredibly, incredibly impressed by the maturity and the decorum with which these kids present themselves. Um, and to that end, their feedback regarding suggestions that they were making were so astute and so thoughtful. And I'm wondering for the officers if there's a vehicle to address the kids' recommendations and what you plan to do with them? Because it's clear to me um that they put a lot of time and effort. These are not like throw-off recommendations, like these are clearly things that they value and thought about. So I'm wondering what you're gonna do with these recommendations and where you imagine this work going forward in the future? Because I do think that this was an excellent use of our resources as a city.
So to start with, we, we operated this program through COVID. And that kind of restricted some of the plans and some of the things we wanted to do, which kind of limited us in a way. But some of the things that they brought up are some of the things that we would like to have already done. And we have already made plans with like the Massachusetts Police Training Council to attend some of the police academies and things of that nature. So they can see firsthand some of the training that police officers get and see what, what those classrooms look like. So they're, to be able to take them to other places, like they said, to be able to do some of the kind of shoot, no shoot in the, in the simulators that we use in police training in the police academy, so they can have that experience. So we do have plans moving forward with less limitations due to some of the restrictions that we faced. And there were other things that I just heard for the first time that, as I was hearing, I was thinking to myself, okay, well, this is what we can do to combat that. So it was great just sitting here and listening to those things as well. But we will definitely take those things to heart and move forward because this program means so much to us.
Thank you so much. I really appreciate your answer.
Any other questions of the guests? Just from the chair, I want to thank you for preparing tonight. And I think one of the biggest takeaways is whether it's, you know, the presentation earlier from Ms. Lewis or hearing from you and these offices is that we are now, we have a conduit of student voice. And I want to say that, you know, we, we will be doing more of this, whether it's with the police, other departments or within, you know, the student council. And I want to thank this administration, this school committee for making that happen. Because a couple of years ago, this wouldn't have been possible. And what we heard tonight was groundbreaking. And I think we're all impressed and look forward to hearing from more across all students and all subjects. So thank you, thank you all. So, enjoy your summer.
On behalf of the COP Talk interns, we thank you guys very much for this opportunity. We look forward to moving forward as a group. Fortunately, none of our interns are graduating, so they get to lead the way for another year for us. So thank you guys again.
And you're welcome to stay to observe if you want to. So with that, Madam Superintendent, item number three.
Thank you so much. So item number three is the request to accept the following updated policies. So in March of 2021, the Everett Public Schools received a letter from the Massachusetts Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. Their district was selected for Educational Stability Program Review, which covers our programs that support our homeless students, students in foster care and students from military families. As part of the review, we were required to submit many policies and documents to DESI, showing them how we service our, our students and our families. And after review, DESI made several recommendations to the Everett Public Schools to either change or add information to our current policies, which are the updates that you see before us. So any changes or updates that you received were highlighted in yellow. We do have until June 30th to send these updated materials back to DESI with your approval.
Any questions of the superintendent on the matter before us? We have none. Ladies and gentlemen, your pleasure.
I'll make a motion to accept the updates of the policy.
I'll second.
Okay, motion is made and seconded to accept the policies as presented. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Abraze?
Yes.
Mr. Barrows?
Yes.
Ms. Cardello?
Yes.
Ms. Lambert?
Yes.
Mr. La Monica?
Yes.
Ms. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Panerisi?
Yes.
Ms. Sarni?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes, nine in affirmative, you have moved favorably on item number three. Next item, please.
Thank you. Item number four is to request the acceptance of the updated registration requirements. So after reviewing the registration requirement documents we sent into DESI in April, DESI made a recommendation to either change or add the information highlighted in yellow.
Move for favorable action.
I'll second.
Motion made seconded for favorable action. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Abraze?
Yes.
Mr. Barrows?
Yes.
Ms. Cardello?
Yes.
Ms. Lambert?
Yes.
Mr. La Monica?
Yes.
Ms. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Panerisi?
Yes.
Ms. Sarni?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes, nine in affirmative, you accepted the updated registration requirements. Next item, please.
Thank you. Item number five is the request to, of the acceptance of the updated data enrollment sheet. So again, this is a form that we sent into DESI in early April. And DESI made the recommendation to either change or add the information that we highlighted for you in yellow.
I make a motion to accept the enrollment.
Okay, motion is made and seconded to accept the updated data enrollment sheet. Any questions or debate on this matter? Seeing none, roll call vote, please.
Mr. Abraze? Mr. Barrows?
Yes.
Ms. Cardello?
Yes.
Ms. Lambert?
Yes.
Mr. La Monica?
Yes.
Ms. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Panerisi?
Yes.
Ms. Sarni?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes, nine in affirmative, you have accepted the updated data enrollment sheet. Next item, business, please.
Thank you. Item number six is to request the acceptance of the updated enrollment residency policy. After reviewing the residency policy we sent into DESI in early April from our handbook, they, we actually looked at some new policies to adopt based on their recommendation. And so what you see before you is a new residency policy based on those, on that, that research that we did. And we added the yellow highlighted parts to them.
Motion for favorable action.
Okay, motion is made and seconded for favorable action on number six. Any questions, comments? Seeing none, roll call vote.
Mr. Abraze?
Yes.
Mr. Barrows?
Yes.
Ms. Cardello?
Yes.
Ms. Lambert?
Yes.
Mr. La Monica?
Yes.
Ms. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Panerisi?
Yes.
Ms. Sarni?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes, nine in affirmative, zero negative, you accepted the enrollment residency policy. Next item, business, please, Madam Superintendent.
Thank you so much. So item number seven is to request acceptance of a donation of books from the Girl Scouts to the Webster Extension. Your agenda currently says 1,800 books, but I was hoping that we could amend it to say 36. We do actually have a donation of 1,800 books that we will place on a future agenda from another organization, but this one should reflect 36 books.
So make a motion to amend the, the item and replace 1,800 with 36 first?
I'll second it.
Okay, motion is made and seconded to amend the item from 1,800 books to 36. I'll still need a roll call vote on the amendment, please.
Mr. Abraze?
Yes.
Mr. Barrows?
Yes.
Ms. Cardello?
Yes.
Ms. Lambert?
Yes.
Mr. La Monica?
Yes.
Ms. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Panerisi?
Yes.
Ms. Sarni?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes, nine in affirmative, we have amended on the piece as amended before you. Your pleasure.
Favorable action on the order.
And I'll second.
Motion is made and seconded for favorable action on item number seven. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, roll call vote, please.
Mr. Abraze?
Yes.
Mr. Barrows?
Yes.
Ms. Cardello?
Yes.
Ms. Lambert?
Yes.
Mr. La Monica?
Yes.
Ms. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Panerisi?
Yes.
Ms. Sarni?
Yes, with a letter of thanks as well.
Mr. Parker?
Yes, nine in affirmative, zero negative, we'll accept it as amended. And of course, a letter of thanks to be sent to the, to the Girl Scouts. Next item, please.
Thank you. So item number eight is to request the acceptance of a donation of 920 books from the Everett Teachers Association. So this actually goes back to something that I had mentioned in one of my superintendent's updates earlier this year, in which the Everett Teachers Association had been granted the Citizens Foundation Grant, the Everett Citizens Foundation Grant that was entitled Literature to Prompt and Further Conversations and on Diversity and Race. That was, this was spearheaded by Ms. Katie McGee and Ms. Louise DeSisto from the Kavarian. They did receive the grant of $10,000 and they worked with their ETA Diversity and Equity Committee to finalize book selections before purchasing. And they did purchase, purchase the books. And so now we have 920 books that reflect, you know, our student population. And we just want to thank the Everett Teachers Association for this generous donation.
I'll make a motion to accept the donation in a letter of thanks to the Everett Teachers Association.
I'll second.
Okay, motion is made and seconded to accept the donation with a letter of thanks. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, roll call vote, please.
Mr. Abraze?
Yes.
Mr. Barrows?
Yes.
Ms. Cardello?
Yes.
Ms. Lambert?
Yes.
Mr. La Monica?
Yes.
Ms. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Panerisi?
Yes.
Ms. Sarni?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes, nine in affirmative, zero negative, you have approved acceptance. Next item, please.
Thank you. Item number nine is a request to approve the contract extension with Elliott Community Human Services for mental health and other specialized services.
Motion to accept the, well, to approve the, the contract extension.
I'll second.
Okay, motion is made and seconded to approve the contact extension on the motion. Ms. Lambert?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through to the superintendent, is this just a one-year extension of the existing contract?
Yes, so what you see before you is the, the extension language. And they have agreed to provide us with the same cost as last year for a one-year extension.
Okay. Did, are there any plans? I know as we move forward, we're building out our own social, emotional. Are there any plans to consolidate and work with Elliott? I know they've done a tremendous job. I can speak to the many clinicians and I appreciate all that they do for us. But I do think there is a benefit in building out our own internal social, emotional support and wellbeing programs. So how do you see this complementing that?
Absolutely. So that is actually the reason that we are coming before you with a one-year extension instead of a new contract altogether, because we do want to build out our own. I think there were some previous models that had been used in the Everett Public Schools in the past. And we would like to explore, especially with the, we know the ever-growing need for mental health services in our schools to explore expanding our services. So that doesn't necessarily mean, like you said, to, you know, not work with Elliott, who's been instrumental, but we do want to explore expanding our own internal capacity and that is then complemented by Elliott. And I think we'll be doing that this upcoming year to determine what that would really look like and bring a new contract before you that reflects those new services next year.
Thank you. Because I do have concerns as we go. And, you know, one of the things we've been talking about is repair, healing. I have concerns that the capacity will be lim, I don't want the services we provide our students to be limited by our capacity to offer supports. So I appreciate your answer. Thank you.
Absolutely. And in this year, I know that one of the big things that we talked about even during the budget was expanding our own support for social, emotional learning. But I think specifically for this year, we know that there's no, we, we did not want to be removing any services. So it, everything we wanted to do for this upcoming year would be additives, which is why we are agreeing to the exact same services and anything that we can provide on top of that, we know is going to be needed.
Ms. Murray?
So in terms of mental health, consistency is such an important piece. Will extending this contract allow students to keep seeing the clinicians that they've been working with? Is that one of the benefits of not putting out an RFP and investigating other options? Or I'm just wondering what your thought process was in that?
Yes, that is correct. You know, we do want to make sure that again, in, in so many transitions, that we are again providing additive and stable but additive supports versus, you know, a time when we don't think it would be appropriate for us to sort of shake things up in this area.
I agree.
Thank you.
Okay, I've seen other questions or comments. We do have a motion for favorable action to approve the contract extension. Chair, roll call vote, please.
Mr. Abraze?
Yes.
Mr. Barrows?
Yes.
Ms. Cardello?
Yes.
Ms. Lambert?
Yes.
Mr. La Monica?
Yes.
Ms. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Panerisi?
Yes.
Ms. Sarni?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes, nine in affirmative, zero negative, you approved the contract extension. Madam Superintendent?
Thank you. Item number 10 is to request acceptance of a donation from Rose Whitcomb in honor of her father to be awarded to two senior drum majors of the Everett Crimson Tide Marching Band, Melissa Seen and Andrew Paiva, in the amount of $100 each.
Make a motion to accept the donation with a letter of thanks.
I'll second.
Okay, motion is made and seconded to accept the donation with a letter of thanks. Any questions or comments on this matter? Seeing none, I'm sorry. Ms. Cardello?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to say that Ms. Whitcomb is actually one of our fine music teachers. And I think that's very sweet of her to do this donation in honor of her father. So I just wanted to mention, we have some wonderful people, as we all know, in our, in our community. Thank you.
Thank you. So with that, roll call vote, please.
Mr. Abraze?
Yes.
Ms. Cardello?
Yes.
Mr. Barrows?
Yes.
Ms. Lambert?
Yes.
Mr. La Monica?
Yes.
Ms. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Panerisi?
Yes.
Ms. Sarni?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes, nine in the affirmatives, zero negative, you have accepted the donation with a letter of thanks. Next item, please.
Thank you. Item number 11 is the acceptance of the following donations from various organizations and elected officials, officials that were given out at the Senior Harvard Expenditure Center. And those were $2,150 worth of carded gift cards from the Everett Rotary Club, cell phone wallets from the Everett Teachers Association, water bottles from the Everett City Council, tote bags from Mayor Carlo Di Maria, Senator Sal Di Domenico and Representative Joseph McGonigal, and gift bags from the Elliott Family Resource Center. And again, we want to thank all of our generous donors.
Make a motion to accept the donation.
Second.
Motion is made and seconded to accept the donations as listed. Questions, comments? Seeing none, roll call vote, please.
Mr. Abraze?
Yes.
Mr. Barrows?
Yes.
Ms. Cardello?
Yes.
Ms. Lambert?
Yes.
Mr. La Monica?
Yes.
Ms. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Panerisi?
Yes.
Ms. Sarni?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes, nine in affirmative, you have accepted the donations with the appropriate letters of thanks. Next item, please, 12.
Thank you. Item number 12, acceptance of the flowers that were donated by Encore Boston Harbor that were placed around the stage at the graduation ceremony on June.
Accept the donation of flowers with a letter of thanks.
I'll second.
Yeah, motion is made and seconded to accept the donation of the flowers. Any questions, comments? Seeing none, roll call vote, please.
Mr. Abraze?
Yes.
Mr. Barrows?
Yes.
Ms. Cardello?
Yes.
Ms. Lambert?
Yes.
Mr. La Monica?
Yes.
Ms. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Panerisi?
Yes.
Ms. Sarni?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes, nine in affirmative, you have accepted the donation of flowers for Encore Boston Harbor. Yes, nine in affirmative, you have accepted the donation of flowers from Encore Boston Harbor. Madam Superintendent, next item, please.
Yes, item number thirteen is to request approval of the use of the EHS Gymnasium from seven thirty AM to three thirty PM for the annual John A. Ragucci Red Cross Blood Drive. So in two thousand nineteen, the Red Cross sponsored a blood drive in the honor of John A. Ragucci, which was very successful and the intention was to have it again last year, but we were unable to do so because of COVID. However, they're very excited to take up this event again this year, and we are very excited to support them. You know, they are very strict with their COVID protocols, as they should be, so they need a space, space large enough. So they have requested the use of the Everett High School Gymnasium, which they know to be large enough as they've had blood drives there in the past. I did receive notice today that August seventh is actually not going to work for them, so they're looking for another Saturday in August. But I was hoping to still receive approval for them to use the EHS Gymnasium for a blood drive on a Saturday in August.
Move favorable action.
Second.
On the motion, can I make a motion to amend it for an open-ended date in the second week of August? Or second or third week in August?
Or on a Saturday.
Or a Saturday that works with the superintendent.
Okay, so my recommendation would be request approval for the use of the Everett Gymnasium on a Saturday in August.
Yeah.
Almost.
Second.
Okay, so on the amendment, can I have a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Abraze.
Yes.
Mr. Barrows.
Yes.
Ms. Cardello.
Yes.
Ms. Lambert.
Yes.
Mr. La Monica.
Yes.
Ms. Murray.
Yes.
Mr. Panerisi.
Yes.
Ms. Sarni.
Yes.
Mr. Parker.
Yes, nine in affirmative, you have amended. The piece before you as amended.
Move favorable action as amended.
I'll second.
Any questions or comments on the item as amended? If I can from the chair, just real quick, those of us that remember Mr. Ragucci, he was extremely involved in the community, was, was the Knights of Columbus, and he was famous for organizing blood drive after blood drive after blood drive. He was also a former mayoral candidate, too. So on, on the motion as amended, roll call vote, please.
Mr. Abraze.
Yes.
Mr. Barrows. Ms. Murray.
Yes.
Mr. Panerisi.
Yes.
Ms. Sarni.
Yes.
Mr. Parker.
Yes, nine in affirmative on the piece as amended. You have approved. Item number fourteen, please.
Item number fourteen is to request to dispose of the following items. Those items are thirty-nine TVs, twenty-three computer tables, one piano, one easel board, and five curriculum material books.
Are you missing the partridge in the pantry?
I'll make a motion.
I'll make a motion to discard the following items as listed.
And I'll second.
Okay, the motion is made in second to approve the request before us. Any questions or comments on the item? Seeing none, can I have a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Abraze.
Yes.
Mr. Barrows.
Yes.
Ms. Cardello. Ms. Lambert.
Yes.
Mr. La Monica.
Yes.
Ms. Murray.
Yes.
Mr. Panerisi.
Yes.
Ms. Sarni.
Yes.
Mr. Parker.
Yes, nine in affirmative, zero the negative, you have approved the request. Madam Superintendent, next item, please.
Thank you. So that brings us to, to the end of Roman numeral five. So Roman numeral six is the item submitted by school committee members. Item number one is to facilitate community listening tours on the pre-K to twelve handbooks and school calendar over the summer months, and that was submitted by Ms. Lambert.
Thank you, Madam Superintendent. So over the course of this past school year, it really began last year. We, we've heard from a lot of not just students, but also their families about the usefulness and what they wish the handbook and the policies within would be for them as far as being a resource. And then more frequently, I've been hearing that we've done a really good job on the calendar as far as naming holidays, acknowledging holidays, but we have some work to do on honoring holidays. And so I'm hoping that over the summer months, we can work. I was very excited to hear our community engagement manager will be starting in July, so perhaps she can assist. But, you know, so I wanted to bring this to the committee to ask if you feel this should be a part of a subcommittee work or if we should have this as part of an, with, with the administration. And if with the administration, I would just ask that we have representation across the city, whether it be school committee, families, and make sure that we have fair representation at the table.
Mr. Barrows.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ms. Lovett, I'm trying to understand. I'm sorry. So you want to do listening tours for families to tell us what they would like to see on our handbooks?
What they would like the handbooks as a resource to consist of. If you look at the current handbook as we do annually, it consists, it's very heavy on disciplinary action. There are some useful policies within that, but it's not the resource that families necessarily hope it would be when a student starts school in Everett. It lays out policies, many of which have to be included in the handbook. But as far as resources, contacts, how do you reach out to somebody in the community? So I mean, I've heard different variations of ideas, so that's why I just wanted to bring it back to the community and more formalize the process. Since we do approve that handbook in the fall, if we could start the work in the summer, because it is more intensive.
I, well, I think, I think it is a great idea, perhaps, to make it more, maybe more effective. You can, you could bring this to a subcommittee and that subcommittee perhaps can work with, I'm just, this is just a suggestion. Bring this to a subcommittee that then could organize those meetings or work with the administration to see how we could organize those meetings. And then perhaps after those recommendations, you could bring the full, the final recommendation to the full board for approval. I mean, whatever works, it works. I'm just trying to see how you can make this more like, you know, direct and, and effective in order to work with, with the community. You can even do, have a subcommittee going to the Family Resource Center, going to La Comunidad, going to, you know, other organizations, do a, perhaps a survey online as well, and gather that info instead of the whole board being involved, a subcommittee being involved, and then you provide the final feedback to, to, to the committee. Again, this is your item. I'm just thinking out loud for someone who does community engagement on, you know, Monday, well, not Monday through Friday, seven days a week. It's just a, a suggestion, but totally up to you, Ms. Lambert.
No, much appreciated. And those are the, along, along the lines I was thinking. So with that, if the, if the committee agrees, I would make a motion to refer this to the Equity, Inclusion, and Diversity Subcommittee to partner with the administration over the summer months and work on this to bring back before the full board.
I'll second your motion, Ms. Lambert.
Thank you.
Okay, so the motion is made in second to refer this item to the Subcommittee on Equity, Diversity, and Inclusion. Any further comments or questions with the sponsor?
Um, I just want to say that I think it's an excellent idea. I do think that currently it's not unusual, or, and we're not an outlier, but our handbooks are discipline-heavy, and it would be nice if they read more like handbooks than rulebooks. So in my mind, including things that the, that the community would find helpful, whether those are contacts or forms or whatever they deem necessary in order to pave the way to have successful educational experiences in Everett Public Schools is definitely something that we need to listen to. I think that those things are just as important, if not more so, important compared to dress code and things like that. So I.
Uh, thank you. Any other questions or comments on the piece? If I can from the chair. You know, the, the handbooks need a new look. They need to be updated. And, you know, if we can replicate with the handbook what we did with the budget book and also the annual report of the budget, you know, I think we'd have a more forward-facing community document that people will utilize as a resource and community input into getting there, as was the case with the annual budget report, would be great. So on that, our motion is made in second to refer this to the committee on the Equity, Diversity, and Inclusion. Can I have a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Abraze.
Yes.
Mr. Barrows.
Yes.
Ms. Cardello.
Yes.
Ms. Lambert.
Yes.
Mr. La Monica.
Yes.
Ms. Murray.
Yes.
Mr. Panerisi.
Yes.
Ms. Sarni.
Yes.
Mr. Parker.
Yes, nine in affirmative, I'm here for this to, to the Subcommittee. I'm Madam Superintendent.
Thank you. So seeing no items under Roman numeral seven, we'll go on to Roman numeral eight, which is bills and payrolls.
Thank you. Ms. Lambert.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I make a motion to approve bill payrolls in the amount of two hundred seventy-six thousand, six hundred and eighty-four dollars and ninety-five cents.
I'll second.
Okay, motion made in second to approve bills and payrolls in the amount of two hundred seventy-six thousand, six hundred and eighty-four dollars and ninety-five cents. Seeing no questions, can I have a roll call vote on that matter, please?
Mr. Abraze.
Yes.
Mr. Barrows.
Yes.
Ms. Cardello.
Yes.
Ms. Lambert.
Yes.
Mr. La Monica.
Yes.
Ms. Murray.
Yes.
Mr. Panerisi.
Yes.
Ms. Sarni.
Yes.
Mr. Parker.
Yes, nine in affirmative, you have approved. Lambert.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to pay bills and payrolls in the amount of two hundred and seventy-six thousand, six hundred and eighty-four dollars and ninety-five cents.
I'll second.
Okay, motion is made in second to pay bills and payrolls in the amount of two hundred seventy-six thousand, six hundred and eighty-four dollars and ninety-five cents. Seeing no questions or comments, can I have a roll call vote on that matter, please?
Mr. Abraze.
Yes.
Mr. Barrows.
Yes.
Ms. Cardello.
Yes.
Ms. Lambert.
Yes.
Mr. La Monica.
Yes.
Ms. Murray.
Yes.
Mr. Panerisi.
Yes.
Ms. Sarni.
Yes.
Mr. Parker.
Yes, nine in affirmative, motion passes. With that, I don't believe there's anything else on, on the, on the agenda?
I make a motion to adjourn and wish everyone a happy summer.
Second motion. On the motion?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion made in second to adjourn, roll call vote, please.
Mr. Abraze.
Yes.
Mr. Barrows.
Yes, and have summer.
Ms. Ms. Cardello.
Yes.
Ms. Lambert.
Yes, and go tune into GBH right now for COVID in the classroom.
Mr. La Monica.
Yes.
Ms. Murray.
Yes.
Mr. Panerisi.
Yes.
Ms. Sarni.
Yes.
Mr. Parker.
Yes, nine in affirmative, you have adjourned. Thank you.